I'd like to call to order the Bucksport Town Council meeting for Thursday, May 8, 2014. Road call, please, Kathy.
Mike Robbsby.
Here.
Glenn Finley.
Here.
Dave Key.
Here.
Frank Dunbar.
Here.
Byron Bitten.
Here. Thank you, Kathy. Item three. Frank Dunbar, please.
Could Pat Ranzone come up, please? Would you come with her in, too?
Bubba wants to know if this is a dumb deal or he gets to vote.
Yeah. Pat's birthday was the fifth, but this is why she's here, anyway. But Pat has been quite noticeable in her work in portraing. And I had a privilege--oh, by the way, Pat, you honored us with your presence. Does that sound familiar? It does, don't it? She said that at her reading at the Alamo Theater. And I was really blessed by that. Her poetry reflected Bucksport in every way. And it's like some of it is history. I could recognize some of it is history. But Pat's been at this for quite some time. This is a proclamation. A poet laureate. Town of Bucksport, Maine, be it proclaimed by the governing body of Bucksport, Maine, in town council assembled on this day, May 8, 2014, that Patricia "Pat" Ranzone be recognized as a poet laureate of Bucksport for as long as she shall live in honor of her devotion and commitment in the fine art of verse through poetry. Respect for the town council. We all signed it, Pat. And you know when they said, "Who's going to present this?" And I says, "Well, I've known her over 60 years. Can I do it?" And I'll tell you, this is a privilege for me, dear. It really is. Oh, bless your heart. I'll take that one, okay? You want to say anything, dear? Can you? Oh, Pat.
I love you all. I love this town. And I love what you've done. I devote myself to it until I die.
Do you notice we got some of your classmates? There's Jackie.
I did notice that.
Curly Gora.
But they want to vote.
Oh, I see. Where did Bubba go? Did this disappear already? Isn't that Bubba up there? Okay. Okay, dear.
Thank you so much.
Oh, my God. Flashing.
Okay. Very nicely done, Frank. Okay, item four. Consider minutes of previous meetings. Okay. Item five. Receive and review correspondence and documents. We have a document here to hear an agreement to save Wilson Hall proposed by Don Houghton, Larry Wall, and Richard Campbell. We will table it until another--
Later we can leave it.
Okay.
We're ready to do this.
Okay. We'll table that till a little later. Okay, item six. Consider resolve R2014-193, awarding a contractor, Arlington Metal Recycling, for salvage of all saleable materials in the Main Street Philammon properties. David.
As part of the dealing with the Philammon properties, one of the things that we identified is that there is a value in the town to removing all of the salvageable metals out of the building prior to having the buildings demoed. And it does a couple of things. One is that it will--there's revenues in it for us. And secondly is that it reduces the cost associated with getting rid of the demo to that company. So I had reached out to this company to see if they would provide us with a proposal. This is a type of an operation that there's a lot of trust involved in the work that goes in with this. And it's important that you pick a company that you have that comfort level with. And as such, Kurt Sonason is the owner of this. Many of us know Kurt. He's a retired Marine Patrol Officer. This is a business that he's in his retirement years. I have 100 percent faith in him that because basically what he's doing is taking all of the metals and saleable items out of there, selling them, and you're trusting him that he's going to give you back the percentage that's greeted upon. I suspect that even District Attorney Key may even remember Kurt--
That was a long time ago.
--when he was a young Marine Patrol Officer.
Now, boilers are the establishment. We sold as boilers, not as junk.
You--that's great. Yes.
And oil tanks, we sold as oil tanks, not as junk.
All of the--what the agreement is that we, meaning David, the mayor, and I talked with Kurt, he would sell it in what has the most ability to get for value. If it's being able to resell it, then he'd be willing to, you know, he'll go out and he'll actually find people to actually buy it. And if it's best to just sell it as junk, then he'd do that as well. Some other things--so those boilers, he's willing to go out and find people that's willing to buy them and as part of that contract. Basically, everything of--anything of that's value in there, other than the infrastructure to the building itself. I've got another contractor coming in next week to look at that, all the architectural wooden features to it, the pocket doors and the crown molding and stuff like that. They're coming in to look at that next week. So what this would be is, I don't know about you, but I've been a little bit nervous with those properties, is that we've got a great police department, but it doesn't--it's pretty easy to be able to sneak into one of those buildings at night and start stripping out, you know, copper and such. So I'd like to be able to get that stuff out of there as soon as possible. And so we don't lose any of that stuff.
When can you start, as soon as you award him?
Well, unfortunately, it's going to be a week longer than I hoped. I just talked to him yesterday, and he's got a trip planned for next week, so that he's going out to the Grand Canyon. I guess he's trying to fill it with junk. I don't know. But so it'll be as soon as he returns back from that trip that he'd be able to begin it going. And I'm prepared to answer any questions more than--
If we have something in there, like we could use, the town could use, we could still take that, or is that--
Yes. Yeah. We've done that. We've been through there several times. And again, the departments have been through there to look at things that--and they have, in fact, taken things. We've saved a lot of money that otherwise you'd be, you know, actually probably going to have to go out and replace things for the department. I know that, like the fire department's refrigerator went belly up, you know, two weeks before the sale. So we were able to use one of the commercial refrigerators in there to replace it in that, and it's one thing we didn't have to buy in the fire department. So--
So we can still do that while he's doing this?
Yeah. Again, I have a good relationship with Kurt that, you know, he'd be amicable to any of that stuff. He's just willing to help us. But obviously, it's a benefit to him as well, so.
There's no cost for us to have him do this.
Right.
As a profit. As a profit.
Yeah. I mean, we have been, you know, there has been some, you know, sales of some things in there that I only chuckled because the mayor pulled off a good one, that he got more for one room than I ever thought he'd be able to get. So there's--there were opportunities there that it's kind of like what's left. It's really the salvage. I think we're really at the point now where it's salvage stuff, not values.
And when they demo the building, it'll just be demo and get out of there.
Correct. Yeah.
And that stuff will be gone.
Did you ever find that, on a slightly off-topic subject, did you ever get anything on the asbestos?
I got a preliminary report back on the burned-out building. And that one was that there was no asbestos in it. That's the preliminary one, but I haven't gotten the written one yet. He's hoping to have it to me by tomorrow. When I talked to him today about all the other buildings, the response was he found a small amount in one of the buildings, and he would be sharing with me hopefully tomorrow in the report that--
Because I would assume Kurt would need to know that--
Yes.
--before he gets in and starts tearing things up.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll just, we can call asbestos copper.
Yep. Thank you.
I'm kidding. So this is, as I said, a very reputable company. I am confident that it's in the town's best interest to enter a contract with Arlington Metal Recycling. As you can see in the proposal, he has insurance that he carries as well. It's a bona fide company that does all the things that he needs to be able to do.
How would the council like to proceed?
Make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and second approved resolve R2014-193. Anything further from the public? From the council?
Yes, sir. Just want to make one comment. I've actually hired Kurt to decommission a large boat that I owned. And he was supposed to take everything just for his help. And we completely stripped it down, cabins off, all the equipment out of it. And I took some of the equipment to myself. But in the end, I ended up with a lot of expenses from, you know, the containers to haul all the stuff away. And at the end of that, he turned around and gave me $2,500 back. I never asked him for it. And he's just a really honest, hard-working guy. So I think it's a really good situation.
Anything else from the council? All those in favor? Pos, motion, passes? All right, let's go back to Wilson Hall. Campbell.
Good evening. Let's see here. I wondered if I could just give you a real brief on the legislative before I enter into that, just to--
Only if you're going to give us more money.
There is a possibility. There is a possibility. But just three things. We adjourned, signed and die last Thursday. And it was actually Friday morning, early. We did pass the budget over the objections of the governor. One of the last-minute efforts that I worked on was Lakesmart, which is an organization to make sure that we have clean water in our lakes. That's actually something that I get a lot of calls from my constituents in Bucksport and Arlington both. It came before my committee. I brought a clean bill out. It was a minority report to fund Lakesmart. It was about $70,000. And there was some back and forth until the end, but it did eventually get funded, not on the vehicle that was before the legislature, but another. And there's a bit of unfinished business. Nursing homes are in need of more money, so especially Hancock County and Washington County. And the governor had an interest in calling us back for that, but we just got word that legislative leadership is not interested in bringing us back. So I don't know what's going to happen there. There was a good amount of money in the budget for nursing homes, but there's need for more. So that's basically the update. In terms of any questions of what happened or anything else you want me to work on between now and whenever?
Is the school funding issue settled?
I believe--yeah, everything was--all the business of the legislature has been settled. So as far as, you know, I know, everything is the way it is.
Same with revenue sharing?
Yeah. Yes. Yeah, definitely. Yeah, that was done basically early in the second regular session. But it is something to watch. The size of government is growing and not growing in this direction, growing in another direction that we all have to wrestle with. And we'll see what the next legislature, 127th legislature, does with it. Until then, everything's fine, as long as it's fine with you. In terms of Wilson Hall, I have some copies of designated developer status agreement that--I don't know if you have copies, or if I might approach. Just for the couple signatures, just for some of the team signatures. So if I might--
Oh, okay. We don't have that one. Okay.
I'm not sure how many of these others are executed, but I have four that are totally executed. Anyway, we'll get these done and put one on the side. So what we've proposed is a letter of intent to work on saving Wilson Hall. And if I might just read down through it and address some of the points, if it'll be all right. It's with excitement and enthusiasm that we, the Save Wilson Hall team, submit our interest in developing the building on your property known as Wilson Hall. Your property meaning land and buildings. Our request is secure designated developer status, which is basically a position on the property so we can do diligence. And the designated developer status basically allows that we can pursue it with a position on the property, but also the comfort that there won't be a sale within this period. And we're able to pursue this to a point where we're all in agreement as we go along to--I'll continue reading on. For the period of 12 months with three months extension if needed, to perform due diligence, explore opportunities for potential users, ownership financing, and ultimately negotiate an amicable proposal to purchase the property for development. The proposal will include a committee input process to define the need and uses desired by the people of Bucksport. The outcome will include a full design-build-concept, concept draft, which will provide concept sketches and a full line-item budget for the construction of whatever we and you want in the building or the ultimate building use. The team will periodically report progress to Bucksport Town Council to ensure mutual interests and maximize success of this exciting concept. So ultimately, the final agreement will make sense to the town, the team, and the citizens of Bucksport. So Bucksport have an appreciation, longstanding interest in preserving and protecting its vibrant history. Wilson Hall, located on the old seminary property, has significant value and played a role, a large role, in the history of Bucksport. Our team has a combined experience of more than 75 years in community involvement, development, planning, designing and constructing reuse, energy-efficient passive solar, green, sustainable projects. It is our hope to come together to capitalize on Bucksport's tradition, historical value, and location to make this project a model for Maine. This agreement between Bucksport and the Save Wilson Hall team is for 12 months with a possible three-month extension if mutually agreed and is for the amount of $1 upon execution of this agreement, signed by myself, Don Houghton, and Lawrence Wall. And then the second page is signature page for all parties. Now, in terms of what we will use to develop and ultimately decide what the reuse for this building is, we want to do some community charades where we get a chance to bring the community in, to find out what the need might be, what the uses, what organizations might have an interest in uses for the space. Basically, define the interior spaces and the exterior elements of the building. We will have concept drafts, elevations, floor plans, use of the building floor by floor, and a line-item estimate, which would be a budget for the completion of it, probably with two or three different alternatives. So we get a chance to promote different uses, different finishes. So it's not an all-or-nothing, one-budget program. When we come to the end, it may work for you, it may work for us, it may work for the community, or it may not for one of the components. And that's why we have requested the 12 months. But along the way, we'll come back to the council and the community after input from the community and talk about our process and our direction, and we'll adjust in whatever way makes sense. And if we get to the end and it doesn't work for one or the other, then it didn't work.
So while you're going through this, you'll be wanting to take people on that property to show them the property. So--
Yes.
Who's liable for the people going on that property? Do you accept liability for them, or?
Yeah, I'm assuming. Do you have coverage? We'll have coverage for the subcontractors we take on there. We probably won't be taking the public on there. This will be--
The town's still liable for anybody that goes on that property. So, right?
I would assume so, yes. That's a good question. We need to look into--
The public is--well, the town is already on the hook for anybody who steps on the property or has an accident. And that's coming out here. I have a coverage. What we want to discourage is people going through the building until such time as that can be found. Everybody's best interest and safety is assured. But we're not going to be encouraging mass meetings at that location. Bring in a contractor. The contractor will have his insurance. Bring in the two or three people that are interested in perhaps developing a piece of it. If I would clear that with the town manager before we did it. Right now, the access is controlled by the community enforcement officer, and we continue to be so.
This doesn't open the door. I see here, full design, build-concept, all of which sounds like money. And obviously, it's your group that's talking about raising money, not the town of Bucksport.
Yeah.
The town of Bucksport, at least the governing body, was within a reach of tearing the thing down. So but this 12 to 15 months is a good, I think is a good thing to give you a chance to see. And I appreciate that there are concerned citizens. Give them a chance to see if they can come up with something that makes sense and doesn't cost the town money. That's right.
There were two things that emerged from our previous meeting with the council. On the one hand, nobody is going to be anxious to put a penny in there until you see some benefit to the town. Secondly, that in terms of going out and looking at other alternative sources of financing, we'll be very active in that. But it was very clear that if we had been putting town money in right this moment, chances out of the vote would have stood to tear it down. What we're saying is we've been in the building and realized how it can be kept up. Our three initial goals are these, and they have to be looked at simultaneously. What's it going to take to secure the building? And by secure the building, I'm not talking about making it a, back to its original thing right now, but rather work to the point where the roof is solid and there's no major leaks at this point. And also work to the point where light can be admitted into the building. Because the average person cannot see the development potential of that building. Those of us who've gone in with flashlights have been in other buildings, everybody with flashlights, and we looked at all the beams in the basement. We know a couple of problem areas. But the building has got to be secured before anybody would want to buy into this idea, whatever the person, agency, or business. The second thing we need to do is to find users for the building. And that's where this design charade, fancy name for design meeting, is aimed at bringing together, open to the public, a session of those persons who might individually have liked to have done something, but they lack the resources to do it. And the question is, can as a consortium, we pull together the resources to make that happen? And can we go forth to a foundation or some other financier with a concept that makes sense for one time, investment based upon it serving not one need, but it could be a dozen needs? Ranges from everything from, and we've already heard ideas from a lot of places, ranging from a recording studio in the basement where somebody could practice an instrument, to having art galleries when they're finished at the current high school, to be down in an audience where more than just parents and grandparents listen to the work. The historical society, I don't think wants to empty out their museum per se, but there's a lot of things in their museum that go unseen on a rotating exhibit. And those things could be done. These are important issues, but they all come together to get to the financial package. Mr. Finley, as I know, very concerned about that it not be a burden on the town. And what we're looking at is to try to save a building that at one point was listed on the list of the 10 most historically important buildings in Maine that were in danger of being lost. This was back under the previous owner, who cut it out with the walls inside. And the building shows up here, there, and everywhere. You commented to us, Council Robbsby, about it's the first thing when one comes up the river to see that belt out. If that belt out is eliminated in the summer season, it's just another attraction to the town. And that's not an expensive part of the whole puzzle. It's a tiny part of it. Basically, that's in a nutshell. We want public involvement. We like to talk to people who may not think that their idea in and of itself could ever be financed, but perhaps working together, we could go out to some of the places we've been at before. And those of you who were in a meeting, most of you were at the meeting, a couple of councils were down south elsewhere.
Hey, don't tell anybody I'm down south next time, because I don't want them to rob my house so bad.
But when that happens, the council saw photographs of what that building had done back when it was part of the seminary and how the town had provided the land. The townspeople of this community provided, I believe, $50,000 in 1850, so it could be opened in 1851. fifty, so it could be opened in eighteen fifty one. We've attracted interest from a local sawmill operator who has experience in getting energy into old buildings without destroying the appearance. He lives outside of Bucksport, but we're trying to rally all the troops. It might be a factor in pulling off the saving of the building.
I personally like to have a little time to check with MMA about liability insurance and stuff like that.
Well, what we'll do is...
Do you have possible investors now, or you're just starting this process?
We've got the possibility of the first three or four investors. It's too premature to talk about all the details, because I truly expect that this will be a phased operation, where if you secure the building and you get the first floor operating, and on the first floor in the basement, it's a huge basement down there, then you start working your way up in the building, but have a plan for the whole thing, on attack, when you have the resources to do a piece of it. I referred at our last meeting with the council to a building that's on its property that we will rebuild. And that building is getting in worse and worse and worse shape. We couldn't do anything to it until we, A, decided, what are we going to do with it? Will we dock it down, or will we put some serious money into it? But when the other project came together, we had the resources to put it into this building, and that building is now worth sixty million dollars.
Would you eventually be looking to purchase this building from the town? Or leave it as a town entity?
That's what will come out of the process. You may not want to sell it.
Especially after you fix it up.
If we do our job and can define the community benefit, maybe it's best to keep it, but we're...
Speaking of that, and those of you who have been by it recently, in the last couple of weeks, the town crew cleaned up the cemetery and the property around it.
I see that.
And just that cleaning up of that part of the exterior, I think gives most people a feeling, that's such an ugly building if it didn't have all that plywood on. And while I have no immediate plans to be a resident next door, I think the people that turned over the Oak Hill Cemetery, really are getting a lot of maintenance done now, needs to be done.
I didn't realize today...
Makes the whole area much better.
I realized, that's where Sarah Ware's buried.
At least part of her.
Both bad.
But I will say, the town crew did a heck of a job on Wilson Hall and Oak Hill Cemetery this week.
There are things on that building people may or may not know. That's not the original bell tower. And that bell tower is not a very impressive piece of work. I wouldn't remove it. I'd either repair it or replicate it. And there's porch on the back, the mason of which built the brickwork, is still lit, is still alive. But that porch wasn't original either, and the building looks much better without it. You can tell by different kinds of work.
I think it's a great idea, and another year or fifteen months to see if we can do something with that building.
This is what we've been looking for along for the last several years. It just came to the point where, you know, we've given up, you know, some of us had anyway.
When you give up, you hook up demolition, and demolition imminent, and that gets people moving.
Yeah.
As well as fifty thousand dollars, more or less, in demolishing it, cleaning up some issues inside, so keep that in mind.
Sounds like now what we need to do is maybe table this till we have a chance to...
Yeah, and bring it back to the meeting on the twenty-second, and we'll check with MMA. And people may want to also check to see if you want to get some type of liability insurance also.
And we'll execute our, and give it to Kathy.
Okay, okay.
Don't hesitate to call anytime, I've got my numbers and everything.
All right. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go to item seven. Consider resolve R. two thousand fourteen dash one ninety-four to approve the recommendations from the Streets and Roads Committee to add nine new streetlights in town. Who's the chairman?
Right. The committee met, and after a couple of meetings and a little bit, quite a bit of discussion, we've come up with a recommendation of adding the following streetlights as they appear in resolve. Intersection of Turkey Path and the Bucks Mills Road, there have been a number of very serious accidents at that intersection where people are, seem to believe, coming off the Turkey Path that the road keeps going straight. It sure doesn't. Poor Ben Rom's house is taking a beating out there. The intersection of Route forty-six and the Mast Hill Road, that's the new portion that was just reconstructed, that is a dark, coming down forty-six, turning left onto the Mast Hill Road. It's a lot better than it ever was before. It's just, it's a dark and it's an excess of ninety-degree turn, so without being lit, you can be fooled, and it kind of catches you by surprise. One question, David, did you find, did you hear anything more about the pole? Or is that still up in the air, depending on the engineer?
It's up in the air? The, no, I actually called the lady from CMP today to ask her that question, to see whether... The question is whether they can put a long enough arm on the pole that's there. It's sixty-five feet, the pole is sixty-five feet from the apex of the turn on the intersection, is whether they can get a, she doesn't know, when she came to look at it, whether they could get an arm long enough to get the light out to the intersection, or whether we'd have to put in an additional pole across the street. And so I'll act accordingly, depending on what they report back.
If we end up having to put the extra pole, it's an eight dollars, eight dollars and ninety-something cents-ish of rental on it, so it's in a month. It's not a tremendously expensive thing. But if not, we'll either put it on the existing pole or have to put a new pole in. The next one is the intersection of the Silver Lake Road and the Crossroad. It's another T-intersection, it's not lit, that's caught more than one person. We had a, we had a resident along Mechanic Street that came in and requested a streetlight on Mechanic Street. Currently, there's one on the corner of Franklin and Mechanic, and there's one at the back end of the parking lot for the post office. The intervening area is quite dark, and there's a lot of people that walk that particular sidewalk to and from the post office and up, and it's an easiest, it's one of the easiest hills up to Franklin Street. So after some consideration, we're recommending that we put one in there. It'll also, there's a new business that has gone in on the right going up, and that'll help light that egress from their parking lot. And then finally, it's Heritage Park, there's one, we're recommending one at the entrance off forty-six, and then four more along this, once you get around the curve to where the power comes back in, from there to the dead-end section. Now that section one of the Heritage Park has been completed and is fully occupied, we need to light it and then progress with the next part. So our recommendation is there would be a total of nine new sodium, seventy-watt sodium lights, and the new lights, the current lights, if you look at them, the bulb is semi-round and it hangs down below the fixture. The new lights, the ball of a lens is flat and flush with the fixture, so the light is totally encased in the fixture, so the light goes down instead of out horizontally, which was a concern with some of the residential areas or near some residences. But this won't be a problem, because they don't light to the side, they light straight down. And it would end up being a, for nine, nine seventy-watt streetlights for an annual approximate cost, including power, of twelve hundred and four dollars and twenty cents. Believe it or not, they don't include the power on streetlights when you rent them, you have to pay the power extra. It's not much, but you have to pay.
One last comment on there regarding the budget of it. I looked at the budget for our streetlights now, and the budget that we have that's proposed for 2015, there's a cushion amount in there to be able to, because you never know what the power usage is going to be. And I talked with Catherine, and we both feel comfortable that that thousand-dollar increase will not require any increase in that budget line. So we can still count, you can add these, and it'll still, you'll have more than enough money in that stellar budget line. Just wanted to change.
Thank you.
How would the council like to proceed?
I approve it. I make a motion, we approve it.
We have a motion, a second to approve, resolve R. two thousand fourteen dash one ninety-four. Anything from the public? Further from the council?
Just, when you're, how do they charge the power? It's a certain rate per unit?
They know that there are, today, on the eighth, eighth of May, that there's seven hours and thirty-two minutes of darkness.
Right.
Or whatever it might be. And they have that for every single day of the year, and they compute, seven hours and thirty-two minutes worth of electrical use on a seventy-watt light is X, and they figure it all out, that's how they charge.
Okay, because a lot of times, streetlights are out for a while.
If a light is out for any length of time, we're still paying for the power, even though we're not using it, because that's, so that's why, and their police department is good, they're very good at reporting out, streetlight outages.
Are they good at fixing them, though?
Well, CMP is pretty decent. They actually get on fairly quick.
We've had three in the last few months, and one kept cycling. It was on Mechanic Street, and had to replace the whole light, so we faxed them in, and we started to check them again, and...
The one in the back of the library there, I can't remember, I don't know if it's on now, but it's been off for weeks.
Yeah, it's, if you report it...
I did, I reported it.
Yeah, they should fix it, and if they don't, you call them again, they'll replace the light, so, yeah. They're pretty good about it.
Oh, sorry, that's just...
Anything further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item eight, consider resolve R. two thousand fourteen dash one ninety-six, authorizing bids to solicit for removing Main Street Fellman Properties. David?
This is simply permission to seek bids to, to demo the buildings, the Fellman Properties on Main Street. What I would be, what the bid will say is that this is a bid to remove, I think it's thirty-one Main Street, which is the burned-out building. That's the actual bid, because we need to do that one. And then the bid will ask for an alternate bid to include all the other buildings. What that will give the council is it'll give you some direction as to, you know, if you can't afford to tear all the other ones down, then, you know, you're not, you don't have to reject the bid, and, you know, we can at least get that one done, and then we'll see how that fits. The companies that have been knocking down my door, waiting, wanting to know when this is going out to bid, I expect it to go out to probably between twelve and fifteen companies for bids, and they certainly appear to be pretty hungry. So I think that you're going to get some pretty favorable bids. But so to reiterate, it's, the one, the burned-out building is being put out to bid to tear down, and then we'll ask for an alternate bid to what they would charge to tear down the other ones on Main Street as well, the other buildings that we own on Main Street.
No, they won't be able to get in there until after Orange and Metal salvage is the one, and if you get the other guy for the wooden stuff.
Correct.
They've got to get first dibs to be able to get their stuff.
Correct. And then what I'm doing is, it takes time to, I mean, my goal is to put this out to bid tomorrow. The bids wouldn't be due until back, till the end of the May, to the end of the month. And then, once you award it, then there's a time period anyway. So I really don't see this as, I've talked to Kurt, and I've talked to the other gentleman, and they, matter of fact, the one that is coming up next week to look at it, I gave those same dates to him, and that's perfect. He can do everything he needs to do in a couple of days. Kurt also said he feels he can do the whole thing in less than a work week, so.
Good.
They don't work on holidays like Memorial Day, do they?
When it's to their benefit, they do.
They'll have a parade going by there.
Yeah.
Just curious.
We can make sure that that doesn't happen, obviously, then.
Okay, thank you.
Pretty standard request.
How would the council like to proceed?
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Are we missing ninety-five, one ninety-five?
I'm going to bring that up as a, under your discussion items, I believe it got left off of the agenda. The resolve's all done, and we're prepared to deal with it tonight.
That got to do with the town care?
Yes, exactly. And it's, somehow it just got left off the agenda, and I'm not sure what happened, but I'll deal with it at...
All right, we'll be there shortly then.
Thank you.
Okay, item nine, consider resolve R. two thousand fourteen dash one ninety-seven, awarding two thousand fourteen street parking spaces and crosswalk striping bid.
Again, this is just an annual, you'd be happy to know it's spring, because we'll be, you know, painting, painting crosswalks. So this is just a standard bid, we got good bids, you'll see on that. If you, that's actually less than what we've done in the past, and you may remember that when Dwayne was in here talking about his budget, you know, he's added four, four crosswalks to, you know, to this year that we hadn't done in the past. The two are, the one at Pink Street, that crossed from Hannaford, that'll, you know, that's one that he didn't, he never had to do. There's two at the entrance of the mill that he has to do, and an additional one, and there's another one somewhere, I can't remember where it was, but I think he said it was four additional ones.
Dwayne wasn't able to be here tonight, but he did talk to Kathy, and this Wilson Ground Maintenance Company did it two years ago for the town.
Right.
And he's very happy with their work, and they seem to be the low bidder. And the budget amount was for thirty-two hundred in the existing year's budget. So this is under that amount. So how would the council like to proceed?
Some more.
Second. We have a motion, a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item ten, consider issuing eleven quick claim deeds for paid tax liens. We have them all right here, don't we, Kathy?
Yeah.
Now, we approve these individually, don't we?
No, you can check them yourself.
Take a look. Okay, how would the council like to proceed?
I move we approve the quick claim deeds for paid tax liens.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve all the quick claim deeds for tax liens. Anything from the public? Council? All those in favor? Opposed? Now, we have to pass one set around for signatures?
Yeah, that's assigned, each one.
Knock yourself out, Mr. [inaudible].
Item eleven.
Okay, item eleven, approve any licenses or permits, if any. Yes, we do have some. And here are the fund stats.
Season for permits.
Season, season.
Okay, the first one up is miscellaneous licenses. Richard Bowden, American Legion Post for Memorial Day Parade. How would the council like to proceed?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion, a second for approval of the license by the American Legion. Anything from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Okay, the next one is Victuro's license for Andrew Lacker, doing business as a bookstax.
Noting no violations, I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve the license for bookstax. Anything from the public? Council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Next one up is Max Convenience Stores, Circle K. How would the council like to proceed?
Noting no violations, I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve the license for Circle K. Anything from the public? Council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Next one is Jennifer Pappas, doing business as Crosby's Drive-In. How would the council like to proceed?
Again, noting no violations, I move for approval.
Again, second.
We have a motion, a second to approve the license for Crosby's. Anything from the public? Council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Next one is Joseph Grilino, doing business as Daffodil's Floor... Next one is Joseph Grallino, doing business as Daffodil's Florist. A new business in town. How would the council like to proceed?
Again, noting no violation, I move for approval, and I'm really glad to see a new business in town. That's great.
Second.
He's actually pretty busy nowadays.
We have a motion and a seconded. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Motion passes.
We got a couple new businesses. We got a new bakery, too.
Oh, and they're doing great. I talked to them today. Did I pronounce that anywhere near right?
No.
Right on?
Oh, shoot.
You're going to announce the, the next one.
Oh, no, no, no.
Oh, this one's easy.
My brother.
Lead Bros Incorporated, Harborview Grill. How would the council like to proceed?
Noting no violations, I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a seconded. Anything from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Lawrence Walls, doing business as Walls Dairy Mart, or the Dairy Boy.
Imagine if we didn't approve this one.
We might have someone in the crowd that's against it. How would the council like to proceed?
Some more.
Second.
I don't see any free ice cream on it.
We have a motion and a seconded. Anything from the public?
What about making him stay open all year?
It's not a license? I don't know if he'd want it in January on the side.
Oh, yeah.
Anything further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Last one is Edmund Wood, doing business as Wood Seafood. How would the council like to proceed?
Noting no.
Yep. How'd you say that?
Noting no violations, I vote for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the Victurio's license for our Wood Seafood. Anything from the public? Further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Okay.
They'll be the ones last time.
Item twelve is discussion items. David, you've got one.
I do. I apologize to the council. I'm still trying to figure out how one ninety-five left off the agenda, but it certainly was not an intentional act. And it was something that, I had the resolve done, I just, I guess I, for some reason, I didn't get it put on the, it's called doing agendas on a Sunday afternoon. And somehow I must have lost, I was putting all of my efforts into the, the resolve and not into the, in the agenda, so. And I didn't pay attention to the agenda close enough, so one thousand lashes with a wet noodle. What I would ask is that, that the council kindly consider taking up an item on the, that's not on the agenda, simply because it's, this is a report out from a, from the committee, from the finance committee, and the, the folks involved with this are present tonight. If that's, if council would be willing to do that.
I'd make the motion, will we take up an item not on the agenda?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, take up an item not on the agenda. Anything from the public on this issue? Problem with it? Council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Okay, we're going to consider resolve, R. 2012 dash one ninety-five, to approve a real estate purchase option to the Bucksport Area Child Care Center. David.
Mr. Ormsby, this was an item that, that came out of the finance committee.
Yep. We, they're, they, we were offering them a piece of land so they could try to raise money and build a facility just up the street from their current facility, which they have outgrown and, and is in somewhat disrepair. So the town, the committee is suggesting that we donate the, the acreage so they can, instead of leasing it, that was an option they were talking about earlier, which they had trouble having banks give them a loan on, on lease, so in exchange for the property that they're on now.
Right. It, this is a project that's actually been around for a couple of years, and I, again, looking at your resolve, I'm sure that you amend my writing on there to, it's not 2012, but 2014. But I use that, I actually use the 2012 resolve where this was referred to the, to the finance committee to first discuss this, so we're, we're kind of two years into this, into this project. So the, the idea is that the, the group would like to have an option on the building that will allow, help them to, to help them be able to raise funds. If they're unable to raise the funds during that five-year period, then the land simply comes back to the, you know, comes back to the town. And it, in the, in the meantime, also on there, the last, the last paragraph on the resolve, so the further resolve that it gives Bucksport Area Child Care Centers, given permission to access the property, it's kind, to be able to survey the property. They want to be able, it's a, it's a five-acre lot, they need about three acres for the, the creation of the project, plus a little bit extra there for expansion in the future. So three acres is, is certainly, is doable. But we need to be able to cut the three acres out of that, and it's got to be surveyed out. They're prepared to do that. And what, what happened is that before this option is actually signed by the council, that, that survey would come back to you so that you could approve the actual survey. So this is, this resolve is approving that option. They're willing to, they didn't want to go forward and try to get the, to get a survey done unless they knew that the council was prepared to actually give them the option. And that makes perfect sense to me, anyway.
Taking that three acres out of that five acres, that's still going to leave access to that other two acres?
Yes, we'll, we'll make sure that, and that's why I wanted you to be able to see the survey before the option was actually finalized, so that you'll know that, that you're not landlocking that. But we own all around that anyway, so even that, around that five-acre lot is, is surrounded by our land, anyway.
Can I, can I get something clarified from legal counsel here? When you said that after the five years, the land would revert back to the town, isn't it still the town's land during the old purchase option?
Well, what I'm saying is, is that the, the town would have the right to sell it, do anything you want with it. During this five-year period, you couldn't go out and sell it to somebody else.
We don't relinquish our ownership during that five-year period.
That's correct.
Okay. Because it sounded like, you know, we had to wait for five years before we got it back.
Yeah, well, what I'm saying is, at the end of.
I didn't think that was it.
At the end of it, the option would expire.
Right.
And it would, it would be just the way it is today.
Well, a furtherance of that thought is, according to the proposal here, we're going to give them the option for five years for a dollar. They're going to sell us their property and buildings for a dollar at the end of five years. Who owns their buildings?
In the meantime?
No, at the end of five years. Assuming it doesn't go through. Something happens.
Again, then this option agreement expires, and it goes right back to the way it is today.
Okay. And that's the same piece of land we were looking at originally, just up around the corner behind, just up.
Towards the middle, yes.
Curve, and that's the same piece we were always looking at.
Correct.
And do we have this written up by a lawyer yet, this option?
No. Again, because I wanted to get the survey done first, and then, once the survey gets done, then we'll have Bernstein sure actually create the, the option.
So you're not looking for any action then, other than our?
To approve the resolve.
Approve the resolve to, depending on what we get back from the lawyer.
Allow them to do the survey.
What, what this says, what, what the intent of this is, is that says you agree, that you're agreeing to give them that five-year option. All that they need to do in order to, to complete that, that agreement, is to provide you with the, a survey of what the land's going to look like. In other words, that's, you know, that's giving them the commitment that all they have to do, in order for you to agree to the op, to agree to this option, is provide you with a survey. Everything else, you're, you're, in concept, you're agreeing to it.
They give us a survey before a final land description is approved.
Correct.
Yeah.
Does that make sense, Mr. Key?
And they, they're also given permission under this resolve to access land owned by the town for the purposes of the survey.
Correct.
Those two things.
Okay, how would the council like to proceed?
I make a motion, approve it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? Anything further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
We have any other, yes, we have, consider scheduling a special meeting for May twenty-second for property tax abatement application in executive session.
As, as your tax collector, I've received a, an application from a, a property tax owner for a, a tax abatement, and state law requires that you hear this, the app, the facts of the application in an executive session before you, you know, before you make a decision. I would, you do not have a meeting on the fifteenth, and you don't have a, a regular meeting on the twenty-second, so I had kind of chosen the twenty-second, thinking that, that it would be relatively short, you know, it would be a kind of a one-item agenda, but I can see things are kind of stacking up on you already. And so it's entirely up to you as to, to, when you want to do it. The reason why we had, I say we, I'd spoken to the mayor about this, why we had chosen the twenty-second over the fifteenth, was because there is something that's, a bid or something that was coming in on the sixteenth or something, there was a, another item that you felt that if you, you know, the, that you'd get, we'd have the information to be able to act on that one on the twenty-second as well, whereas it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be ready for doing that on the fifteenth.
I also, I would like to have a regular, a third meeting in May, because it's a budget process, and there's more information that has come down from the school department that we need to address in, in the budget, and we need to take a look at the budget. So I'd like to basically formally request a third meeting in the, in the month of May, that third meeting being the twenty-second.
Okay. And we'll have, we'll do, we'll do this in executive session and do the other.
Right.
Yeah, we'd schedule this after the regular meeting on the twenty-second.
Correct.
Do, do we act on that, and you have to act on that in a public meeting?
Public meeting, you come out of, you'd come out of executive session.
So do we want to do this first and then act on it at the meeting, or?
It doesn't, it doesn't matter. You can do it either way. I mean, because you come out and, it's no, no different than any other executive session, where you come out of it and, and place a vote. Your vote is, is, I have to assign it a number, you don't, there's no name associated with it. All of the information is completely confidential. So you'll come out and you'll vote on whatever you, you know, what you want to decide on regarding the abatement.
But using the numbers that.
Exactly. Yes, sir.
Is this, is this an issue that you've checked with council in regard to the legality of it?
I have, many times. I've spent.
I'm not talking about MMA, I'm talking about town council.
I did, I'm sorry, town council?
No. Yeah, I'm talking to Bernstein sure.
Yes, sir. I, I did, after, I actually, after speaking with you about this, I did contact them. Their, they have not provided me, they, they liked my, like MMA, they thought my solution was unique, and they wanted some time to ponder it. The gentleman that was very good, he's the one that, that represents municipalities in the abatement cases in court, in spirit court, and he said, could you give me a couple of days to, I'm hoping to hear back from him by tomorrow.
So you're anticipating we'll have that information on the twenty-second?
I'm hoping to have it by, you know, by tomorrow. Definitely by the twenty-second. Thank you.
Okay, one other thing, we need to schedule a finance committee meeting.
Yes.
And what was the specifics?
It's with Catherine about investments, and discussion on what to do in the future.
Yeah, this is an issue that the finance committee had taken up in the past, and it were, it was, it was put off because the finance committee had several things going on on the agenda, and it kind of got lost in the shuffle, and, and needed some time anyway, and so she was hoping to, to be able to bring back in, in, in May, and, and meet with the finance committee to follow up that discussion about the investments with.
This is the one where she'd done a lot of homework and provided us with information.
That's correct. And you had, you heard some presentations from several, several banks, and so what she's prepared to do now is, there was a kind of a shortlist of people that come back to, to talk to, I think there was two or three that she was going to bring back from as a result of that, that, that kind of made the first cut, so to speak.
Can I give you any idea how much, how much time she needs?
I would, I would say you're going to prob, I would expect an hour to, is that, that's a reasonable amount. How, how long did the last one take?
Yeah, it was a little longer than that.
Yeah, but there was.
It was an extended one, but there were a lot of people.
Lot more people. I think she was talking about, I think, two, either two or three that she was planning on bringing back this time, so.
How about the Wednesday bef, the May twenty-first there?
The twenty-first?
Yeah.
Yeah, fine.
They'll give us a week that we don't actually have a meeting before that, you know.
Five o'clock?
That's fine, five.
Five thirty.
What's, what's good for her, does she say a time?
Wednesday.
Why don't you do the twenty-first?
Yeah, you could do it at five if you wanted.
I can do it at five, I think.
We could actually have it at the marina, so.
It's all right.
I'm sorry, was it the twenty?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, Wednesday.
At five PM?
Five PM, yeah.
You're having a meeting with boat owners on the sixteenth?
Sixteenth.
Where's that going to be at home?
Hasn't been determined yet. We were kind of waiting to see what was going to happen tonight. You know, I needed some information before, I didn't want it to.
We may not have the, you know, I don't know. People just wonder what we're going to do, I guess, so we were going to, we may not be able to have it until after the twenty-second.
Right.
Yep.
It's one of the reasons why I was holding off on it, just to, to, holding off letting people know about it. But the answer to your question is, it was, we had talked about maybe having it here, just so I had enough, enough, enough space. And it, I may, if we wait until after the, after the twenty-second, it might, what I might do is reach out to Derek Goodine, see, if he's going to be here like on a Friday or something, it'd be a good opportunity for him to, to meet with some of those folks as well. I'm just thinking out loud.
Okay. Any other discussion items?
We do have a discussion items, I guess you could call it a discussion item. Derek Goodine, the gentleman we've hired to be our new town manager, will be here tomorrow around nine o'clock in the morning. He'll be visiting with various department heads, probably going around town, meeting some of the business owners, and he'll also be here Monday. He's taken a couple of vacation days from where he's working now. He wants to get to know the community a little bit, and he hopes to come up one more time before he actually comes up here for full-time. So, does anybody else have any discussion items?